I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The time is eight oh one AM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
Bonnie Kim. Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fabes.
Here.
John Cesaretti.
Here.
Ann Harden.
Here.
I seek a motion. Oh, it says twenty twenty-four in here, sorry.
Apologies, I just want to make sure that everyone.
Yeah, and I didn't catch it. It is, yeah, so I, it is, it is twenty twenty-five. We're getting used to it. Yes, but thank you, good catch. Okay. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth, sorry, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the December ninth, two thousand twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim. Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes.
Yep.
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carries. We do not have any Facility Development Committee items today. We are moving on to School Finance Committee. Mr. Cesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. I think I'm going to turn it over to Business Manager Cory Boltmeyer to talk about fees.
Okay, so today we're going to take a look at a lot of information related to our twenty-five, twenty-six student fees. All right, so the first item up for review is our instructional materials fee. Recently, the last few years, we've had the approach to increase this fee by CPI for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, three point four percent is the applicable CPI factor. So on this slide, we have each of the fee line items by grade level. I guess before I go on, so in the board's packet, there's the slides. Then there was some reference documents. One reference document is the actual fee sheet that lists all of our fees that the board approves annually. The reference point on that document is that besides the fee that we're looking at for next year, it has ten years of history in case any, if you're, if you're wanting to reference anything back. Then there was both Food Servicing and Transportation had their own individual documents that had some program-specific financial info. Okay. Back to the instructional materials. So what you see proposed here in the third column is a CPI increase for, for next school year. The one exception to that is a recommendation to adjust the kindergarten level, grade level fee from one nineteen to two forty-three. That's in recognition of going from a, from a half-day offering to a full-day program next year. And when we just look at the materials that are used, that, that would, what's used in there is very similar to what, what you might use in a first or second grade classroom. The one difference of why it's recommended to be set fifty dollars less than like first and second grade is we, we're not seeing the one-to-one iPad use. So that, that's the recommendation for instructional materials. Since we do have a lot of fees, I'll pause at the end of each one. If anybody has any questions, or I'll proceed to the next one.
Can you just remind us again what actually the instructional materials are, like what, what they're paying for?
So it's, it's a combination, I'd say at the highest level, it's a combination of technology and like consumable, like the consumables that are used within the classroom.
I have a question. So do, in follow-up, I think to Allison's question, so do other districts charge this fee?
Yes. I, every district that I've ever come across and charges some variation of an instructional materials fee.
It is, in my experience as well, it's, it is pretty universal, and it is used just to offset the cost of those materials that are used by a student in class throughout the year are consumed and then need to be replaced the next year.
Is it mostly like iPads at this point? What, what is it?
Excuse me. It could be, obviously, it's a combination of the iPads, but with kindergarten not having the one-to-one, that was the reasoning for the less fee. They're available, the iPads are available to them, but it's consumables like workbooks or construction paper or anything else that the students consume and then we need to replace.
The iPad thing, if you recall, we have the rotation of, breaking my own rule of not speaking into the mic. Lead by example. So we have a rotation of first and fifth grade going four years, so second, sixth, third, seventh, and fourth and eighth, and then we take those iPads and roll them down to kindergarten. They're just not used as much developmentally. Our teachers do a lot more, not on electronic devices, and that's, they're primarily cart-based, not, they're, they have designations, but they're not used often as much as they would be at first through eighth. And for these other grade levels, we used to have a tech fee back in the day that got rolled into this. So there used to be a separate technology fee that got rolled into this instructional materials fee. So it was like a fifty-dollar fee historically. Thank you.
All right, so the next fee up for review is, is our lunch fee. Okay, so I'll kind of walk through this slide. What, what I wanted to show on the top half of the slide is we have three years of, of actual data. In those, the K six and the seventh, eighth, that, that's the price per lunch that we charge in each of those years. And then over on the far right, we have the actual deficit of the program, followed by the percent covered by fees in that particular year. I wanted to highlight that because as we've had conversations the last several years, like the adjustments in the price has, we have made a lot of progress. Then I get to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget line item, and while it does show a step back, I mean, I would, I think I would caution is that that particular budget's a little conservative. On the revenue side, I'm not, I think there's a chance that we'll, we could go over budget, but what we've seen so far, I'm not super confident in that. And on the, on, on the expenditure side, while we go into a year knowing the salary and benefit of the food service staff, the, the supply costs related to food, there is no fixed price. And so in, in, for certain items, if we, if the markets were to see rapid inflation related to like food cost, when we, when we were buying things on a weekly basis, what we pay in September could be different than December, could be different than like April. And so when I build a budget, there's definitely some conservativeness in there to allow for that, as we have seen some of those rapid rises in the last year, few years. So that said, then as we go to the bottom half of the, the page, each of those options for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, trying to calculate what the estimated deficit might be is based upon the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So if there's some conservativeness in twenty-four, twenty-five budget, that's going to roll down into twenty-five to twenty-six options. So came up, knowing that we've made a lot of good progress, that there's probably some conservativeness in the budget, we have three options that we're proposing for consideration. Option one is just taking the existing two fee amounts, increasing them by three point four percent, which is CPI for, for next school year. Then the second option would be, let's take that three point four percent, but let's break out and create a new fifth to sixth grade lunch fee. And in talking with, with our food service coordinator, we've had conversations about, you know, what, what are we providing at, at each of our buildings? And we felt like what we provide at K four is a little bit different than what's at five, six, which is a little different from what's at seventh, eighth. We felt like for what we put into the program, having a fee that's roughly in the middle of the, what would be a K four fee in seven, eight, made a lot of sense. And then for, for an even higher fee, option three would be roughly double what CPI is for next year. And over on the right, you can kind of see the differences in, in the deficit by, you know, the different options, how much they change. The, the change isn't huge going from option one to two to three. And, you know, if I, if I were to have a recommendation for, for this, I, I think at this point, I, I would like, I think I would recommend option two. That said, I'm happy to answer any questions related to the lunch, lunch program financials. Amy.
Just, I would, I really appreciate that conversation. I don't know why it never dawned on me, having kids who have gone through that fifth and sixth, it is a very different offering than what they get in elementary school, so I think that makes a lot of sense. And I support the idea of option two. I like, I, I'm worried about going backwards toward our goal of having the board not cover quite so much, having this be a user-covered fee. So I appreciate your careful thought about that.
Allison.
Do we get much pushback on the price of lunch? Like, are there, are there users that are unhappy with how expensive it is or not? I mean, I kind of think five forty-two and five fifty-six, sixty-two, or whatever it is, is pretty good bargain.
I'm sure that there are people that may not like the price, but of the things that we hear feedback on, this would not be one of the ones. I hear, I hear it on, we hear it on other topics or other fee areas. Like I said, I'm sure it happens, but it, it's not as prevalent maybe as some of the other ones.
I'll just add, we do offer, although we're not part of the National School Lunch Program, we do offer free or reduced lunch for those who qualify financially or have a hardship need that might warrant that. I always like to mention that so that families know that that.
Well, then I sort of agree that option two or even option three, I would be open to that too.
So I'm a little open to option three, and that is because food has skyrocketed, and I feel like CPI, I'm assuming that the cost, the increased cost of literally the food exceeds CPI, just based on my own experience. And I, and I do feel like we have made all this progress. So I go along with majority, but I, I can.
Lisa, oh, Erin.
I feel, sorry, I feel exactly the same. Like, I'd be fine with two, but I'm kind of liking three as well, just because of our philosophy of having the users cover this more than the board as a trajectory.
Hearing that, I, I just want some clarification because we heard some understanding of the option two middle grade level fee. Option three doesn't take that into account, would the board prefer to see, if we're moving forward with option three, do we want to also have that kind of mid-range pricing option for HMS in light of this pain coming?
That, that's what I was going to mention. I think reflecting the actual increase in costs in fifth and sixth grade and having those users cover that makes a lot of sense, instead of doing a straight seven across, seven percent across the board.
Yeah.
I would agree. I, I support all of that too.
I have a question. So what about, I mean, this is shockingly efficient. I think I've ordered coffees that cost a lot more than this. What about food quality? Do we get, do we have issues over food quality and complaints?
I, I don't, I don't know necessarily about quality, maybe what's on the, maybe what's on the menu. You know, mostly students, they would prefer to create their own menu.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about students. Yeah, sorry, parents, yeah.
It's been a hot second, but my kids bought literally every single day unless there was a field trip that required a bagged lunch.
Yeah.
They never complained.
Yeah, that's good.
There are many adults who take advantage of the food service program as well. So there, I, I think Cory's probably spot on. There are some students who might prefer some different items from day to day, or maybe the cookies and the juice to be brought back if, and those sticks that have the.
Bosco sticks?
Cheese. But for the most part, I think, I think it's, it's something that's well-used and appreciated, so. So I think we have our direction there then to go to bring forward option three and to make the fifth through sixth grade the high crest option price point in between the elementary and the junior high. Yes, okay, we'll bring that back.
Thank you. All right. All right, so then the next topic is, is transportation. This is one where some of the info on the slides is also in the one-page document that I provided in this board packet, but was also shared with the board back in December. So first one is really just reviewing what our fees have been the last four years, how do, how does that relate to ridership? Yeah, I think for the first time this current school year, we have seen like price impacting overall ridership. That may not have necessarily been the case in the last couple of fee, fee adjustments that we, the district implemented. All right. One of the other things that we did last year was when we made that bigger jump to nine fifty and five sixty-eight, we were keeping in mind, you know, what were some of the other Nutria area districts? So you see where we're at for twenty-four, twenty-five. You know, we're just below where Wenack is for the round trip in one way, and a little bit more under Nutria, but certainly above Avoca and Glencoe. Last year, when we had kind of this presentation, conversation, it was in March, the far two-right columns were a little more helpful because some of our neighboring districts had already made their decisions. When we reached out recently, they're all still kind of like us in, in the process of figuring out what they want to do for next year. You know, I, I don't know, the only one, I think maybe Nutria is probably looking at it, maybe a small increase, but I don't know about the others. So just kind of a reference point as we dive into the next slide. All right, so we finished twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, just over sixty-eight percent of the expenses covered by fees. We, we, we have a substantial jump for, in fees for this current year, and when you look at that percentage in that far right column, that's a nice jump from sixty-eight to seventy-seven. The fees, yeah, they played a part in it, but it's also, we were, because there was reduced ridership, we were able to save a route and a half. That helps immensely when you're looking at that percentage in the far right. So kind of knowing where we're at, looking ahead, we have two, two pieces of information. This middle section is just some options that we put together and what that might look like. So option one, five percent increase, you see round trip just under a thousand, one-way just under six hundred. You know, that puts us really close to where Wenack is at, and assuming a four-and-a-half percent increase in cost, you know, we're just shy of eighty percent if ridership were to hold. Option two is ten percent increase. Now the fees look pretty similar to where Nutria is at for their round trip and one-way fee in the current year, gets us a little bit over eighty percent. Option three, you know, higher increase once again, putting us up just under eleven-hundred for round trip and six fifty-three one-way, getting us into that eighty-seven percent range. And then in the bottom, in the past, we've always kind of, when we were, you know, in the sixty percent range, we'd always wondered, well, what would the fee need to be at our current ridership to hit eighty percent or ninety or a hundred percent of expenditures covered by fees? So that those amounts are, are there. One thing I, I will say is, as we open up for questions and, and conversation, we could certainly make a decision today. We could also, you know, talk about it, put it on hold. We are, are getting closer to issuing our regular transportation services bid. And so what I think could also be very useful is waiting to see what those firm numbers are on the expenditure side, knowing that the expenditure side can have a great impact on the overall percentage. And then once that's known, I can refresh a slide like this of what the fees and, and the ultimate percentages might look like. That might be a, just thinking about the timeline, that might be a couple of months from now. That could be an option for, for the board to consider, because beyond just knowing what the cost would be in twenty-five, twenty-six, when you do a bid, we would be seeking pricing of anywhere from a three- or four- or five-year contract. So as the board's thinking about what that next decision is, you would have multiple years of, of, of one side of the equation known at that time. That is certainly an option.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, Amy.
So if we were to hold on that, which makes a lot of sense, I think, what is the timing in terms of when you put these fees out and when you request?
Okay, so.
Ridership commitment?
Yeah. So like, as relates to like bidding it out and then ultimately approving it, none of, like, waiting for that would impact when we've pushed out transportation registration in the past. That's always been a little later into the spring. So I think my target would be, let's get the bid out and then get all the results back, you know, go through the responses, and I would, I would think that, you know, by our March meetings, we could have like firm decisions on both sides of it. That, that would be my target, which would be similar to what we've had in prior years, and then that's still probably a month, maybe two, before we open up the transportation ridership. I can't remember if it's either late April or early May when we typically open that up, but I know it's not too long before the school year ends.
So I feel like why wouldn't we wait until we get the answer?
Yeah, yeah, I think we agree. I have a question. So should we be looking for buses shopping?
Like, to own our own?
Yeah.
No, I, I think like we're, we're outsourced right now. You know, if we were to try and own our buses, but then have somebody provide the service, like, at least in the short term, the biggest challenge is we would be outlaying a lot of money, or I guess we could, you know, buy them on installment, but then you're paying interest on that. You know, if, if, I don't know, I, I, I like the way we have it now, where like North Shore is responsible for.
Yeah.
You know, maintaining, buying, we're, you know, dealing with all that.
Yeah, I, I mean, this looks like the outsourced playbook, right? Devitate the people who outsource, drive up the cost. So, I mean, it's, I know, it seems, I know you've done a lot of work, so it's justified, right? Costs are all over the place, but it seems a lot. So worth thinking about, because I, like, where, where does that end on this trajectory? Yeah, sorry, Amy.
Didn't we used to own buses and purposefully chose not to continue? So I, I feel like that's good history to remember, that there was a reason we.
Oh, for sure. And we did it to reduce costs, and now the costs are being driven up. That was kind of my point.
But I do remember that actually getting bus drivers, I mean, like, like, providing your own bussing is a giant headache that I think takes us away from keeping our eye on the price of teaching and learning. I, I would hate to go back.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to pay for it.
I, I think it might be worth it.
Yeah. I think it's worth discussing.
I, I just remember historically, I'm not sure it was cost-effective to own our buses and maintain them at a price of higher. It could look different now, but I, I know finances were a part of the decision to move away from that model, so.
Yeah, I completely agree with you.
I'm inclined to stay with where we are.
Yes, I totally agree. Yeah, but the, what I'm saying is, you know, things change over time, and the trajectory of these costs are pretty extreme.
So is this a discussion the board wishes to continue to engage in? Do we want to put that on an agenda item later, or something we want to simply monitor and for Cory maybe to keep an eye on and to bring back updated information when we come back?
I'll speak for myself. Everything I've learned over the years about the Tribune and trials associated with having your own bus company, I don't feel the need to open it back up, with all due respect. I don't know how other people feel, but I'm not interested.
I think it makes a lot of sense just to keep an eye on it. I think as an optional service, you know, we're not required to provide bussing, that it's not something that I would want the, the time and the resources spent on of owning our own buses right now.
I, I like that John's, I like that John's thinking about it, but I think I'm ultimately with Lisa on this, but I like that you brought it up.
Oh, yeah, I, don't get me wrong, I just, I think it's worth thinking about.
So we will task Cory with thinking about it and continuing to monitor it along with kind of his collaborations with other, other districts who are considering the same, and we'll just kind of keep an eye on it and keep the board appraised as we move forward.
Okay, so then the next topic for fees is our, our athletic fees. So the first slide, we've got several years of actual program history related to the deficit. More recently, you know, it, it had crap, crept down below ten thousand. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four for actual, it kind of bumped up to what it had been prior to the three years before that. When I look at what was different than from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, two parts contributed to going from, you know, roughly twenty-three hundred to almost thirty, roughly thirty thousand. One, on the expenditure side, we, the, a big portion of the expenditure side for athletics is the stipend that we pay to coaches. That included a increase as. Uh, that included a um increase as part of the CBA. Um, so that that was, that was a a big part of it. And then on the revenue side in twenty-three. To twenty-four, we saw about a thirteen to fourteen thousand dollar decrease in the fees collected. And so one thing to consider as we think about what may happen in any one given year related to athletics is. As we go through and set the fees. Each of the teams in sports that we offer, there's a certain number of spots. And once the, once the fee amount, whether it's two hundred or three hundred, four hundred is set. Um, for anyone given sport, essentially the risk shifts to D thirty-nine of what the participation is. And so in any one given year, if we see participation drop. Or, and it, and it really doesn't have to be that drastic, it really just could be a few, few spots on each team. Adds up, and you know, next thing you know, revenue is down thirteen, fourteen thousand. So that that was, that's one component of it. As we look ahead to, or look into our current year, um, looking at where the expenditures are and where we have. Collected fees and what's likely still out there, probably projecting a deficit somewhere in that twenty to thirty thousand dollar range. So something within the, what we saw from fiscal years, uh, twenty fifteen through twenty twenty. So that being said. We're starting to think about, well, what would fees look like for for twenty-five, twenty-six? Second column has what the fee is right now. The, the third column is a CPI increase for twenty-five, twenty-six. And then, just as an additional option. The, the far right column is just CPI plus rounding up so that each fee either ends with a five or ends with a zero. If we were to do that far right column, it just puts us a little closer to the. The bottom of that range, um, looking ahead. So like I said, when thinking about the deficits, it really does. A a big part of it is just how well are we able to to fill out the roster spots with with within each team? That said, I'm happy to answer any questions related to the athletic programs.
Lisa.
Cory, on the fees, like, we're using CPI as the benchmark. But isn't it the contract that? That regulates the increase here? So is CPI the right multiplier here, or is it actually? What we're paying?
Yeah, so.
You know what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, so the, the contract that was settled. The first year was a related athletic stipends, the first year had a, had a. Small increase in the coaching stipends, then it was two years that they were flat. Which twenty-five, twenty-six would be the third year, so it's like going from this current year to next year. The stipends will remain the same, and then the fourth year, there's a small increase, I think it's only two or three percent. Um, and then the fifth year, it's flat again. So from like the coaching stipend perspective, that should be flat going into next. School year. Things that, you know, potentially could go up would just be like, you know, referees. Any supplies, primarily what I see on the supplies. Um, yeah, there's a little bit of sporting equipment, most of it's the uniforms. But usually like ref- referees is probably the one that we see an immediate need to react because if. All everybody around us is, has made an increase and we don't, we're not gonna have any referees for our home games, so.
On demand, the cost of referees has gone up more significantly than some might.
We have, we generally speaking, been filling the rosters?
I would say like a few, when we go back to the year where we were. You know, seventy-six and 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 twenty-three hundred is deficit, those years were were much better. I do know, like, in the current year, I've anecdotally heard that a few of the teams have several spots that are open. Unfortunately, you know, going into a year. You don't know that until the tryouts have happened, and now all of a sudden, you know, like, take, take, just looking at this. Basketballs are are one of our biggest fees. Well, if a team, if a team typically has twelve roster spots and the team only ends up with seven or eight players. You know, that's a few thousand dollars just there from one team, something that you don't know until the middle of the year.
I'd like to add, I mean, I I think these are risks worth taking for dollars that are pretty small. To try to encourage um participation in after-school sports. So they take the risks.
You mean going with a lower increase?
Yeah, and also, if if there are seven players on a basketball team, so what? What are you really missing? You know, it's, there are seven kids, because what's the alternative, to cancel the program and not do it?
I think it just means it shifts the cost to the taxpayer.
Yeah, and I think that's fine in this case.
I think I I would add, I agree, I think there's something about offering a comprehensive school program, which would include. Some after-school sports offerings, even if not all students. Elect to participate, just as we do with our music programs and in several other programs. Um, so I agree with you, I I don't think we want to consider canceling a program just because we have fewer. Kids trying out or participating, I do think that swings from cohort to cohort. Especially in light of many of the travel sports options that are available now. I don't know that students choose not to come out for a team because of the cost of the programming. It's more often because of their other commitments or um whatever else is going on in their lives. So I, I agree with you, John, that we should continue to offer the program. Even if the team is a little bit smaller, that's a risk worth taking um in my book as well. I think really the question is, do we increase by CPI, something more or something less? I think CPI, in my opinion, seems like a a fair marker to increase, knowing that there is. Some variance that happens from year to year in participation and will continue to try to. Work with our athletic directors to try to increase interest in participation in these programs. To the greatest extent possible, because I I do think it's valuable, it's yet another connection for our students to their school and to each other.
Did you guys get what you need from us?
Does that mean CPI is what you'd like to bring forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so then the other topic that I have uh for under finance is annually.
Actually, um, before, are we gonna move beyond the fees, is that where we're headed? I had a question. How easy is our waiver process for these fees? And follow-up question, does anybody actually get a waiver?
Yes, um, so I I think how easy it is. Probably there's some differences of opinion because you do have to demonstrate your financial need, either through hardship or through. Providing um a copy of your either pay stub or your um last, last year's taxes, those kinds of documents are actually. Required, it's not a simple request. We do, um, you know, there's always the potential that you could be audited when you're collecting funds and dispersing them, so. We take great care in reviewing that. That said. It's pretty common that someone who has a need uh gets approved for fee waivers, so we. Broadly encourage our coaches, our athletic directors and our families to access those fees. We have angel fund that's available to offset some of the costs of those programs. Uh, but then also there are other um fees that are simply waived um and absorbed by the district for those who demonstrate financial need, so. For food service, for transportation, for um clubs and activities. Graduation fee, there's, there's a wide range of fees that can be waived if us, if a family really is in financial need. I think we're generally pretty generous um with understanding families go through things, and if they. They have a need and ask for help, we try to assist them.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking that question, it's an important one.
Yeah, there's a, there's a famous case, a tax case where a hospital, I think, claimed that they were non-for-profit charity. And then the tax administrator asked them, okay, so did you give any charitable care? And it was, and it was either zero or, you know, point oh 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 one percent. It was always good to ask a question. Thank you. Sorry, Cory.
No, it's fine. So the second item is just more of a procedural thing that uh the board's required to approve. So in two weeks, uh, we'll be asking the board to approve like a budget counter resolution. It really, the resolution is just the board directing the administration. To begin preparations on the next fiscal year's budget, um, within the document I shared with the board. One page is kind of the calendar. Kind of the major milestones throughout calendar year twenty-five. You know, May, we target May to come back, do a presentation on on the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Then in the month of June, at the board meeting, uh, the board would approve a tentative budget for the upcoming year, we. Approve the public hearing, and then we put the budget on display over the summer to meet the thirty-day posting requirement. August is our approval month. Um, and then other things that are related to. The the overall budget for fiscal year twenty-six. October, we start the levy process. And then um we kind of wrap up the calendar year with our five-year financial projections presentation in the month of December. So happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you, Cory. That's it.
Great, thank you. We are ready to move on to strategy committee, Mrs. Schneider Fapes.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Dr. Crumis fully for a five to eight scheduling committee.
Thank you, uh, we're excited to have back uh Kate Dominique and Kelly Jackson. To provide us with an update on the scheduling committee's work um for five-eight. The board will remember that this um work has been ongoing now for, I think, a couple of years. With teams of teachers and administrators working together and with some um insight from some outside experts as well to. Look at how we might make improvements to our High Crest and Willmott Junior High School schedules, so. The last update uh was provided a couple of months ago, and Kate and Kelly have done some additional work with their teams and. And I think are excited to provide an update um as we're looking forward to implementing a new schedule next school year.
Kelly, Kate? Right, um, in mid-November, as Dr. Crumis fully mentioned, we uh shared schedule recommendations with the Board of Ed. That were arrived at after over two years of work as a committee of teachers and administrators to reimagine the schedules at High Crest and Willmott Junior High. Uh, after gathering feedback from our respective committees and our staffs, we have reevaluated these recommendations and are here to present updates to these. So we'll start with High Crest. So we met with our uh scheduling committee, our High Crest scheduling committee, after the committee of the whole meeting. We met uh December tenth, and at that time, we reviewed the recommended schedule that was shared at the meeting. Along with various other schedules that we had worked on during our committee work. There were really a couple that had risen to the surface that we dug into at that time. We had some feedback from our staff that we also considered during that meeting. And we evaluated our priorities and how the various schedules met or did not meet those priorities. At that time, we arrived at two schedules we felt would work best for High Crest, one of them was the one that was recommended. And um the other one is actually the one that's on the screen today, which I'll dig in into in just a second. At that time, our team was really split uh between the two, we went back and forth, we spent like a half a day. Just um discussing these two schedules and. And and after that meeting, we walked out of there, still continuing to move forward with the um recommended schedule from the previous board meeting. However, we shared some more information and we dug into, after that meeting, dug into what our teaming structures would look like. And it became apparent that we would lose some of the teaming structures that we value at High Crest. In lieu of of that schedule, and um we really needed to go back to what we really hold dear with respect to the teaming structures and. Our original goal of being able to uh foster better social, emotional well-being for our students through these schedule changes. So after careful consideration, weighing the pros and cons of each schedule. And so forth, the decision was made to move forward in this direction. The time allocations listed for each uh grade level are as follows, so we have a fifth grade ninety minutes of ELA time, fifty-five minutes math. Thirty-five minutes science and social studies and creative arts, world language and PE, and then that thirty-minute hawk time period during the day, which is. For social, emotional instruction, as well as for interventions and enrichment opportunities. In sixth grade, it's seventy minutes of ELA, fifty-five minutes of math, fifty-five minutes of science. And then forty minutes of social studies, thirty-five minutes of creative arts, world language and PE, and then the thirty-minute hawk time. This continues to offer the hawk time, which was one of our must-haves. And offer that uh SEL time and um intervention time, but then also this. Goes back to um an increase in math that really, I think, meets our needs for fifth graders and sixth graders. Um, and then also allows for the increase in science. In sixth grade and maintaining the forty minutes of social studies in sixth grade, which was lost in the other schedule. I think you may recognize some of these time allocations as we presented this back in the spring. This was the original schedule, and then we kind of flipped course, and now we're back um in in line with that. So uh we have shared this with staff, we are continuing to talk about it, and um the work continues, but this is how we're moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning, everyone, Happy New Year, good to see you. So at Willmott Junior High School, we also have spent a lot of time in the last couple of months revisiting our schedule. In the early November, the WJHS scheduling committee shared concerns and feedback about our previous schedule, and so using this feedback. We really worked to create a schedule that addressed their concerns, but also met the committee's must-haves. And so through this work, we decided on that staff will have a common planning time, and so this will include our math teachers. Our updated schedule uh from our meeting on December twelfth, I think I skipped over that, we met, we ended up meeting on December twelfth, I'm sorry, I'm backtracking a little bit. To talk through the previous schedule that we had given them in addition to the new schedule we created through November. Um, and so on December twelfth, we shared this new version of the schedule with our scheduling committee. And this schedule included common planning time that now included our math teachers in that common planning time. Our team-based wolf time is intact across grade levels, so what that means is that across seventh grade and eighth grade. Uh, our teams will have wolf time together. The movement between our math classes will be easier with a new version of the schedule decided on December uh tenth. Each class will be forty minutes for all subject areas, which is how our schedule is now. Wolf time is five days per week, so that is what you saw uh in, when we met in October, I think, October, November. And one of these days per week now will be designated as an additional period of math. And so basically, in our previous schedule. We had seventy-five minutes per week of additional math time, and so this new version will have thirty to forty minutes. Of additional math time per week, a little less than what we had had a couple of months ago, ago when we presented. But we really wanted to hear our scheduling committee's concerns and feedback, and and as we shared at the last meeting, really try to find consensus. Across all members of the scheduling committee. We met on Friday from twelve-thirty to three-thirty, so uh we still have more work to do, which we will share with you down the road. But we had a really great meeting on Friday afternoon, and we're looking forward to providing an update for you later. And I think that's it for me.
So as you'll see, uh, we do have a a beginning list of of work ahead, it's pretty high level, but um we each are, are. But we each are, are finalizing the details for our hawk time, wolf time, looking at what does that look like when we get down to logistics. Special education planning is a big thing that we are, we have already started working on, but will continue to. Instrumental music at High Crest is going to be key, planning for instructional time changes. So with any increase or decrease in that period, teachers need to decide or understand how to allocate the pacing and how to better use instructional strategies for especially the increase in time.
I have. This is so exciting, and it sounds like a lot of work has continued to happen. I, I know one of the questions that you all talked about at the last meeting was about passing periods. So does this feel comfortable to you all at both schools in terms of the impact on passing times?
Yeah, I think there's some periods that we're still trying to work out at High Crest, but it, it feels comfortable. I think we can do a little bit more work with the schedule just to make it feel more comfortable.
Do you have a sense of what that is, or is it not, not determined yet?
It's not determined, I think the, the difference is, our schedule looks more elementary in style because of the various times. It's not as neat and clean. And so, with some, some classes, like for example, fifth grade math and science, those are together in the schedule. So there's not really a passing period needed, it's taught by the same teacher. Whereas between a creative arts, world language and PE, there is, because there's movement of students. And both grade levels will operate at different times. So we're still kind of working out some of those logistics, but they'll be fine.
Right.
Yeah, and our scheduling committee really felt that two minutes wasn't enough, so we're leaning into the three minutes. But some of those specifics for us will also be determined over the next couple of months in terms of specific timeframes. But we were comfortable with that decision and felt that three-minute passing periods was workable.
Okay, great. I have to admit, two minutes sounded real quick.
Thanks, I'm so happy to hear that you're holding the team structures. I think those have just been working out great and happy that those will continue. Just a question, so with math, currently in fifth and sixth grade, is it 40 minutes? So it's going from 40 to 55 in the proposal today, okay. And then holding steady the number of minutes for seventh and eighth for math? Or no, you'll get that additional day with the, okay.
Yes, so on a day-to-day basis, students will have that 40 minutes of math. But then one day per week, they will have an additional period of math.
Right, okay. And, and then if all subjects are 40 minutes at WJHS, does, will you need to extend the day or will keep the day the same? Because I know the last proposal, I think, was extending it by a few minutes.
That's some of our work over the next couple of months, but more to come for sure.
Great, thank you, guys. Anyone else?
I do, I have a question, yeah, thank you for doing this, I know it was really hard. And, so I was looking at the committee, the whole meeting agenda we discussed back in November. And I was particularly excited about math going up as much as I think we were initially hoping it would. If, you know, it's, you know, education, right, it's, it's a personal thing, I think, for parents. And I'm curious, do we, do we have processes or policies about kind of helping parents to get more of what they want? You know, so the school district is going to do what we do, right? And if parents want more math, what do we do? Do we refer them to, you know, other programs, things like that?
I think with, something that's really important, once we implement this schedule, is going to be having some opportunities to gather feedback, not only from our staff, but from our students and from our parents. And so that would be a part of that process where they could voice, this is not enough, or, or we want more. I think we also have to be mindful that with any change, it takes time to adjust to that change. And so, I think this is, I, I think the 55 minutes at, at High Crest specifically is a nice way to step into that change. Going from 40 minutes to 70 minutes, that's almost doubling your class period. And so, I, I think this will allow us to explore some new ways to, new instructional methods, allow for more conversation, dialogue about math and sense-making during that period. And then, hopefully, you know, we'll see where we go with that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one, John, you'll remember this, the instrumental music, making any tweaks or changes to that can be very alarming for the parent populations. I'm just wondering, is it just, is there any change to that? And are we going to roll that out? If there is?
Yeah.
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate many changes at the junior high. We may have to, the instrumental music teachers may adjust their technique classes, but it will still be in the same place as it is in the morning.
Yeah, and I think our morning schedules will continue at High Crest. It's more of the technique schedules during the, the school day.
They won't be like shortened or shortchanged.
I mean, the, the period may adjust from 40 minutes to 35 or something like that, but we don't want to shortchange any programs.
I just want to commend the committee and Kelly and Kate. This has been a long process and a lot of really thoughtful consideration with a lot of different priorities really needing to be considered and worked through. And in the end, I think I've heard them say many times over, there is no perfect schedule. And I think we've come to realize that is very true. So, probably there's not a single person who's been involved in this who would say, this is absolutely the schedule that I want above all other options. It really is coming to consensus and compromising. And so, I, I just want to commend Kelly and Kate, as well as all of the committee members and all of the teachers at both schools who have weighed in throughout this process. I know it's been a lot of work and I appreciate everyone's collaboration and willingness to hear each other's perspectives throughout, so thank you.
And I'll just, sure the whole board feels that way as well, we know it's not easy and we look forward to it being implemented.
I just had one other question, sorry to ruin that perfect ending there. This is intended to be released next fall, correct? Okay, and I guess I, I just want to make sure that the way that it's rolled out to the parent population and the kid population is really as thoughtful as all of this work has done, has been. I'm sure it will be, but I know it's probably going to feel like a change for everybody around. And I just want to make sure we get ahead of that a little bit.
Absolutely, that's some of our work in the next month, so.
Sure it is, yeah, thank you.
All right. We're ready to move on. Thank you. This would be an opportunity for the public to address the board, but seeing no public here, we will move on to old business. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Okay, then I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, individual student matters, specific personnel and collective negotiations.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss individual student matters, specific personnel and collective negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs? John C.'s ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, motion carries, we are now adjourned to executive session and the time is nine o'clock AM.